Have a list of the code sections below. The waiver and the side setback. The in all residential zoning classifications, site and rear front setbacks shall be partially waived by the town council under following conditions. The waiver shall not apply to special setbacks imposed by this section of this article other than the applicable zoning classifications. The waiver shall not exceed ten percent of the required minimum setback or setbacks in this specific zoning classification, except as provided in section A six. The waiver shall not, in the opinion of the zoning board of appeals, have adverse effects on the neighborhood or general welfare of the area. The waiver shall apply only to the principal structure or accessory structure. The total structure coverage of a lot area shall not exceed fifty percent of the total lot area. The setback waiver request may be considered up to twenty percent of one setback only if the request is a result of an error discovered during construction of a one-story residence under a valid building permit. Applicants for the waiver of setback complaints shall submit a letter to the town administrator setting forth a specific request for the need therefore. The letter shall have the following documents attached. Assigned affidavit from a wedding property owners who will be most directly affected by the request of the waiver indicating no objection to the request of the waiver setback. Verification by certified survey of existing setbacks and the percentage of total structure coverage on the lot. And C, failure of the applicant to obtain the signatures, this is the case we're following there. Failure of the applicant to obtain signatures of all outbidding property owners will require public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. For a variance for the purpose of this section, the terms of bidding does not include lies, just touch the property only at one point. Be planning and zoning board unanimously recommended approval of this variance on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. The applicant is in the audience.
Do you want to? Do you want to come up here and say something?
When we first started to build the garage, one of the things that was really important to us was to make sure that we did everything right by the book. We wanted to make sure everything met what it needed to meet. Not just for doing the right thing, but we also have some neighbors who were, look for reasons to cause a problem. They've been targeting us, harassing us for a long time, one of which is in the audience tonight, probably speak, you'll see. So we did everything we could and I looked up the ordinances and it looked like I needed a fifteen foot setback. So what I did is we decided we're going to do an extra ten feet, we're going to go twenty-five feet, just to make sure there's no problem. If something isn't working right or something's not placed right, probably want to make sure we got it covered. So we did that, we went ahead and we had the accessory building built. And then when it got to the final survey, we said, we found out it failed the survey. And we were told that we needed a twenty-five foot setback instead of fifteen because it was a key lock because of, we were cornering a lot and one of the, the design of one of the other lots next to us. So it didn't seem like that'd be a problem because we built in that extra ten feet for twenty-five feet. So in looking at it and talking with the survey, it appears that the building was built a little bit crooked. And the northwest corner, just the corner, is thirteen inches short, so it's like twenty-three feet, nine inches. So I asked the builder how that could happen and he said they had to make a slight adjustment in the way it was set. To not encroach on an oak tree that was of the future growth of one of the oak trees. So we were told that we could get either a letter from the buddy neighbor that's saying it's okay, but this is a gentleman threat to sue us twice when we were going to put up the garage to begin with. So it was obvious he was not going to sign the letter. And then, so we went with the variance route. So the area, and if you want me to point it out up here, I can show you, is probably about ten foot to stretch. This corner right here, because the building's on a slight canteen, this little slice right here, thirteen inches left, is falling short of the twenty-five foot setback.
And you said there's a tree there or there's a root, you said?
There's, there's a tree right about here that turns out when they were putting in the pad, they canted it a little bit to avoid affecting the tree.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak on this? No? Go ahead. State your name.
Uh, school bowl grant wrote, so you're asking this man to demolish his, his outbuilding and move it thirteen inches?
No, we're not.
Because I remember a case when Jerry Seinfeld bought Philly Joel's mansion out on Long Island and he, he leveled the whole thing. He raised the property and he built it five, five inches over to get the sunrise. So this is a little bit extravagant, I would say, to require some, you know, thirteen inches, I mean, give or take. And we got twenty-three feet and eleven inches in between him and the neighboring property, it seems like kind of a witch hunt. But, you know, code enforcement is fun and we're going to have a lot of fun with it tonight, a real lot of fun.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, it comes back to council then? Comments? Oh, Dan, sorry.
Yeah, Jason, when we applied to the permit, we supplied ordinances with that as far as the setback training, that supplied at any time prior to the creep.
We checked and submitted permit against the code ordinances and if it meets the land development regulations when it's submitted, we approve it as submitted.
And it was, so they had the extra ten foot in there, so they already showed.
Yeah, they already made it twenty-five foot.
So, yeah, this is after.
Right, oh, yeah, I understand now.
Yeah, we do check it.
He had it, he had it at any time, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the, from what I see, and I've seen this a lot, I would probably say that this is contractor error, that he, he laid it out wrong. That eleven inches, thirteen inches would not have hurt that oak tree, but, you know, for that reason, I can't see holding the property owner responsible. And short of a massive lawsuit and everything else with contractor trying to get him to move it, which will cost everybody money, you know, I would definitely be in favor of approving this.
Thank you.
I agree with Rick. No, no, I'm fine.
I agree, that, that's, it's a small distance and it seems like it was an error, so.
It was a potential.
You know.
I make the motion to approve resolution twenty-six, twenty twenty-five for the variance number V two thousand twenty-five dash O one.
Okay. First and second, I, Rick and Dan, any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, alright, oh, I need to adjourn, I need to adjourn the zoning, um, board of appeals, nobody needs to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, Dan and Rick, meeting adjourned. Now, I will call a regular meeting of the Grand Ball area town council to order. Okay, first thing on this agenda is, oh, presentation of our deputies. You're up.
I am up. Good evening.
Good evening.
Sergeant Wheeler with the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, I'm standing in for Lieutenant West, he would normally be here tonight. Just go over some statistics for both Malabar and Grant, I'll go over Malabar first. This is not everything, but it's some of the highlights of some of what's going on in the area of Malabar, it's on our zone seventy-three. Disturbances, of the two disturbance and noise disturbance, we've had forty-six, forty-five of those being noise disturbances. I'm sorry, one of those being noise disturbances and nine of those being general disturbances, it could be arguments or something that may be heard outside of somebody's house. We had forty-five fires that were reported in October. Eighteen injured ill persons, which we respond to with fire rescue and they respond to those. Patrols, a total of a hundred patrols, which would incorporate, incorporate residence patrols, park patrols, foot patrols and business patrols. So in all total, a hundred of those. We had twenty-nine reports of reckless drivers, but let's also remember that part of the zone is also incorporates I ninety-five. So some of those that come in may, may be resulted from what's on I ninety-five, I said, and, you know, their system's going to hold the same for, same for zone as well, the Grant area. And then, and finally, we have thirty-one traffic stops through the month of October. I do not have stats on how many mornings of family citation, but it was enforcement action on each one.
Mostly Grand Ball Kerry Road or?
Uh, they would have been all over.
This is Malabar still?
This is Malabar area, so this, this would have been Malabar Road. I know that we've been focusing on area of Corian ads, hall and ads, those stop sign areas, we're getting a lot of complaints about people running on stop signs and that sort of thing. Speeds as well, but mostly it seems like people are not stopping for the stop signs in those areas. That, that covers Malabar, I have others if you have something specific.
Not Malabar, but we're interested in Grand Ball Kerry.
Okay, and then, so. The Grant area, I don't know why it should be Malabar.
That's okay.
So the Grant area, we had forty fires reported in the Grant area.
Forty fires, like house fires?
Forty, forty fires total, so it would have been, it would have been house fires, it could have been something smoking, brush fires, that sort of thing.
That's a lot.
Those also would be transformers that explode and they're arcing and it was like, if it gets, if it gets reported as a fire, that's what we're, that's what we're responding to. Patrol areas, a hundred and thirty-four total patrols and that, that incorporates school patrols, residential patrols, park patrols, foot patrols, all of, all of those areas that are also patrolled. Note, fifty-nine of those were residential patrols, so those were checking on people's houses in the area. Twenty reports of reckless driving, again, the, the lower part of seventy-four zone, the Grant area, there's a stretch of I ninety-five that is incorporated in that as well, so some of those may be attributed to what's happening on I ninety-five. Twelve CRs stamped for traffic enforcement, that's, that's directed enforcement in particular areas, and then sixty traffic stops, you know, in the Grand Ball Kerry area. Again, those would be along US one, because we know we've had some complaints about speeders on US one. Also along Grant Road and Bray Brook, the stop signs there, Old Dixie and, and that area down there that kind of surrounds Barrett Bay, as well as some of them in the, in Barrett Bay as well.
Nothing, no robberies or anything nasty like that?
So I, I would have highlighted those.
You know, we, we, I know because last time we had a gentleman that was concerned about incidences like that on, on Treasure Lane.
Yeah, so, uh, no burglaries reported, that's in four zone, through the month of October, no robberies. Really nothing, nothing else of note.
Okay.
Just major.
Sound good.
Alright.
Yes, thank you very much.
Any questions?
And anybody have anything? Anybody in the audience?
Just one quick, from here or go up there?
No, you can just state your name.
Uh, Rafael Lopez, I live down Palmella Road, neighbor right over there. Um, since we were talking about traffic, just something my wife knows, she's an OB-GYN, she lives out here, works at Hibiscus Women's Center and the hospital at home. She also drives up to the area, but just because we're talking about traffic, she's been talking about how much she's noticed just a huge amount of traffic in the morning now, backed up at Valcaria and US one. And how like dangerous it is getting, um, and like consistently every day now the traffic's backed up well past the railroad, um, westward. So like, I mean, I'm just mentioning like the idea of a traffic light there, I know it's been talked about, but just someone like her who's, she's living in the middle of the night to go deliver babies, things like that. And I know there's plenty of other people getting on that road, so only because you brought up traffic am I bringing that up, how bad it is in the morning now.
I think there's a traffic light in the works.
Yeah, so, just on that comment, thank you.
There any else? I have called over this one each week.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Anybody? The second agenda, we have a meeting, meetings, the one meeting, anybody want to pull that? Counsel?
I make the motion, uh, pass the second agenda for October eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion in second. Tom and Dan?
There isn't any here.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, public comments, five minutes, anything not on the agenda? Yeah, that's fine.
Am I, am I the only one?
Yeah, looks like, anybody else?
Alright, don't knock down my phone now.
Okay, uh, now that school bowl grant road, so, uh, we had a contractor, a town contractor, uh, cleaning up the, cleaning up the south side of Grant Road, building, uh, getting rid of the dirt. Uh, that was great and I kinda know the guy, him and his wife really hate me, I don't know, maybe because of my hat. But anyway, uh, I asked him about selling me the dirt and I asked him about giving me the dirt. We need to fill in our property with dirt to keep the water flowing and, and away from us down to the ditch. He didn't want to do that, he said it was political reasons, yada, yada, yada. So we watched, I don't know how many trucks take dirt out of Grant and bring it where God knows where. I think that we need to keep that dirt in Grant somewhere. If he doesn't want to give it to me, if there's a political beef, fine. Uh, that's just my two cents. Uh, on to the second item, unlawful use of code enforcement on your own neighbors for displaying the MAGA and Trump flags on private, property. Uh, last, I think it was somewhere last spring, code enforcement was used for purposes to bully people's neighbors because they had a Trump or a MAGA flag. Uh, the ordinance only applies to political campaign signs on the roadside for candidates and required to be removed within fifteen days after an election. Now a woman is displaying no kings in Ukraine, this and that banners, garbage, but she's allowed to do that, that's what, she is within her rights to do so. Uh, I, I, I believe that you should apologize and allow those people to supply the MAGA flags, supply the Trump flags on their own private property if that's what you did. Uh, there was no official report. Uh, and now for a little code violation fun. Uh, code of ethics, the Florida code of ethics has been violated by this very town council and your appointee. In my opinion, I mean, I, I, at least at the last meeting, uh, council appointee, Mr. Hood, said I was unethical and that I had slandered himself and I had slandered each and every one of you, even the, the pilot, who was like a Sunday school teacher over there, a good kid. Uh, but I never did that and I cast aspersions on my good character, which fell into question with, which what could serve a role and unbiased. You know, what we're dealing with here is the Florida code of ethics. It prohibits public officials from employing, appointing, promoting, advocating for a family member, a rule known as nepotism. This law is defined in section one, twelve, thirty-one, thirty-five of the Florida statutes. The minutes of May seventh workshop and a special meeting show Mr. Hood did participate in deciding and, and participating about his own family members receiving X amount of dollars for a raise, it happened to be ten percent. That's a violation, so you are being served a code violation by me, a private citizen. You violated code and now it's your turn to sit in the seat, because you are code violators, all of you, especially him. You cannot vote on your own son or daughter or whoever it was, doesn't matter, getting a raise or receiving extra money from our town. It goes against the damn laws, right here. Now, the minutes are available online, you can look at it, Mr. Hood, you know, he called me unethical, he called me a slander, I never, I bend Iceland, anything like that. I never slandered anyone of you and I never will, that's a, that's a serious accusation and I consider that a besmirchment of my good character. Now, how does it feel when the code enforcement comes for you? You don't like it, do you? You don't like sitting in the hot seat with the code enforcement like you did to my friends? Code enforce everybody, well, that's your little tool in your toolbox and now it's been turned back on you and the wheels are already in motion. So I would advise for Mr. Hood to step down, get the heck out of here and leave it alone. Because he's already violated and we don't want this to go any further, I don't have any personal beef with any of them. I just think, well, I mean, he did slander me, but whatever.
Time's up.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ned.
She was still talking.
She was talking?
Yeah, he didn't hear you still talking.
Oh, that's okay, he's fine.
Oh, I didn't mean to.
He didn't mean to come down, he just didn't hear you.
That's okay.
Do you want to say something, go ahead?
No, 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 I just wanted to let him know his time is up.
That's right, ma.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alright, anyone else want to speak? Move on to new business.
Mayor, you have one more card up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ron.
The late guy.
You're always welcome.
Hello, hello. And where the mic is. I, I spoke with you before and brought it up during other, um, meetings here, you know, the old famous, let's get together, casual. Uh, if we could find a time that where the public, the residents could make it, um, on a Wednesday morning at nine o'clock in the morning, doesn't seem like, yeah, that, that's where a lot of people are working or. Uh, and I know you guys don't want to come on a Saturday on your day off, so something, uh, if we could try and put something together that'll work, um, six-thirty night here, seven o'clock night here. I, I wanted to do it very casual, but I guess it was explained to me last time that it has to fall under sunshine law, blah, 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 blah.
Right.
If we do this.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be like a kind of, it'll be a workshop.
Okay.
More being votes taken and it'll be discussion, but it still has to be an advertised meeting and we all, we all have to be here, so.
Okay. Um, and then kind of on that, I, I spoke to you also at the end of the last meeting is, I've been looking into trying to present to the town, uh, the opportunity to put actual cameras in here for every meeting. Palm Bay has it, I know where, the much larger municipalities have this and it's broadcast on a YouTube channel, it's served on a private company servers. It's, there's ways to see it, so you don't have to come here. And I'll, I'll stumble across some and I ran across one that was going on, I think it was Brevard County's, uh, meeting that was televised just a few days ago. And there's a lot of interesting stuff and, and they're in the process right now of going through, uh, multiple cases like we went through about the rezoning for developers. And there's one that's going on right now and it's nice because you get to see who your representatives are and how they vote and how they talk and where they're at. Now, we don't have, uh, it, from what I saw then, they have on like districts, each person has a neighborhood, a district, we don't have that.
No.
Is it?
Is that large? Yeah.
We're not figuring out for?
We represent everybody.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, that's just the type of, um, government the town chose when we incorporated. We gave the residents a choice, we, we gave them a choice of districts and they decided they wanted to be at large.
A choice could be changed though, if we voted on it, I mean, the people, you guys voted.
It's in the charter and it'd have to be changed with the charter.
And the reason I, I bring that up is because the way they have it, they'll have a, a council member that takes care of a neighborhood, a zone. And they get to know that area real well, they could concentrate, they might live there, they know the people personally, they spend more time. Because what, what might matter to somebody in one neighborhood, the other neighborhood don't care about. So at least they have a voice for what's going on on their street, in their town, on zoning, on building, um, parks. Uh, I, I guess we're not big enough to really worry about that, but that is a good thing. Because when you have multiple people living in a community, but they don't ever see where everyone else lives, and I don't know if you guys been here long enough, you might know, oh, town, every street, most of the people, yeah, so that might not be relevant, but, uh, but I, I would, I, I did a little phone calling and, and online research about doing cameras. And there's, there's ways to do it, you know, people are doing personal things, but you can put permanently mounted cameras in here. And there's wide range of costs. But I don't know who I would talk to about it, if you have an interest, I think if the town had a chance to put input on it, I think the town would like it. And, and doing a budget, say in a place like this, you could do it, a two camera or a three camera, uh, zone and it could be auto switch, it could be, someone can manually operate it. And you could do it where you buy the cameras and you host it on a server and it's, it's there, you have your own domain, it could be, maybe tag it to the town's domain. Or companies could provide that service. Like on YouTube, I started a YouTube channel, I wanted to go live. They got a lot of rules, you have to have fifty subscribers before you can go live and there's, these companies bypassed it somehow. And I mean, it's anywhere from a three hundred dollar a month budget to unlimited. And they would basically, you buy the cameras, you set it up and they would host it, your stream would go, you just have to have Wi-Fi connection. Alright, thank you.
Something we can consider, thank you. Anyone else? Go on to new business, we have an audit engagement letter from Berman Hopkins.
Attached you will find the audit engagement letter from Berman Hopkins CPA and Associates. This engagement letter is to audit the financials from fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. They state the audit will be complete by March of twenty twenty-six.
We do this every year?
Yes.
Seems like we just did it.
Well, one just ended and this one is beginning.
Right. Okay, and this just means that they will do an audit for us based on government standards, that's all it, that's all this letter is?
And then they'll provide a financial statement at the end.
Right. So, is this who the price?
It does, the price will not exceed forty-six thousand.
I should enjoy this.
It did go up by about, um, four thousand dollars, like, so. They state keep adding certain standards that they have to audit by, so that's why the price has increased.
Just, I hate to ask this, but, um, you know, we had to do a, a do-.
I like that guy with.
Do they have anything to do with that?
They did not.
Oh, he hates me.
They don't audit that, they don't.
The guy with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's just the state.
He likes to come out with hands.
Um, we'll have to speak on this.
Pictures, I was talking about the guy that was.
Oh, I don't remember who it was.
Council?
Yeah.
I make the motion to accept the, uh, Berman Hopkins engagement letter.
Stay around and talk to somebody.
And we have no discussion, no questions?
Jessica, have you been contacted and you could be working with the same people as last?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, we have, um, motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Alright, resolution, resolution number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six. Resolution of the town of Grand Ball Kerry, Brevard County, Florida, amending budget resolution number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five for fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, by changing certain amounts shown as anticipated revenues resulting in an overall increase of twenty thousand two hundred and seventy and certain amounts shown as anticipated expenditures resulting in a like amount providing for an effective date. Jessica?
This budget amendment is requested to increase the overall budget by twenty thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Four thousand will be used for the audit, fifteen thousand are private donations received from the G D C A to be used on Veterans Memorial. And one thousand two hundred and seventy will be used for the Christmas tree lighting that was donated by Caikat Cos Marina.
And thank you, G D C A. And thank you, Treasure Coast Marina, that was very nice. So we'll use that money to add to our Christmas celebration.
Alright, yep.
Any discussion on this? Counsel? Any questions?
Move for approval, Resolution Twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-five, Budget Amendment.
Where else? You can ban, um, any more, any discussion at all? All right. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The next item is, uh, Request for Recession of Code Compliance Fees. Jeff and Jane Lafferty.
Okay. I'm gonna give you guys a brief overview. Jeff and Jane Lafferty, owners of thirty-nine and forty V I P Island Unit B, are requesting a decision of code compliance fees for doing work without permits. In close, you will find the timeline of events that occurred along with corresponding documents that include communication, recorded orders, and magistrate minutes. As a brief overview, the property owners were given sixty days at the hearing on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five to come into compliance. They requested an extension order on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. An extension order was granted at the next scheduled hearing on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. They were given an additional sixty days to come into compliance, which was September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, which they did not meet. They have now approved fees in the amount of four thousand, three hundred dollars. So, from the original dated order, which was February twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five, it was fifty dollars a day, beginning on May twenty-sixth through July sixteenth, is two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. From the extension order dated July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, fifty dollars a day as ordered by the magistrate beginning on nine fifteen, twenty twenty-five, through ten nineteen, twenty-five, when their permit was issued.
Okay.
And they are here today.
They are here. Do you all want to come up?
Yep.
Good evening. So, yes, we were, uh, given a code violation notice in our yard. Uh, I think we found it three days before we were required to appear before the magistrate. And during that meeting with the magistrate, uh, I guess they had sent notice to us back in November to a house that we sold three years prior. And, um, so we never received a notice. So, but on that date, we were granted ninety days to get our permit. Well, the permit ended up being multiple permits with multiple things that had to be done. So we were, we were caught on our dock, so there was no permit for the dock. Our builder, who said he did pull a permit, which he did. He pulled it with the E P A, Environmental Protection Agency. So that permit was pulled. All the paperwork was done with E P A. Everything was signed off. Yeah, in two thousand twenty-one. Everything was signed off by E P A, uh, for the inspections and everything. And then we were notified, well, you need to pull a permit just for the dock section, not the seawall and the dock. So having all that paperwork from E P A, we submitted that, and we received our permit, um, I think, what, six, forty-six weeks later? Yeah, so we received the permit four to six weeks later, and we were notified this permit. But we also, our builder replaced two decks, one on the front of our house, one on the back of our house. And we had a shed that sat on top of our septic tank that we had to move, uh, in order for the septic tank to be replaced. Uh, so we were told by the town that, uh, you guys have a new shed. Of course, that shed is about thirty years old. I think I should have just leveled it, but she wouldn't let me. So anyway, the shed, uh, because we moved it about ten feet away from where the septic was for the new septic to go in, uh, it's required to have new permits. And we had it sitting on the lot next to us and our lot, but we own both lots. So we joined the lots, um, to take care of that. So we, we submitted drawings with the shed, the decks, and everything. But when we submitted them, we were told, no, this won't work. It has to be done by an architect and signed off by an engineer. So we had to go find an architect and an engineer. That took us probably, what, three months almost? Just to get that paperwork and documents completed. Yeah, it's hard finding contractors on the island. Nobody wants to come out there and work. It is not easy, and it's a process, just going through submitting and getting permits and all the different stuff. But we did submit for the, the permit for the dock. We also submitted for electrical permits for the dock and two boat lifts, um, that are both powered from our house. And all the electrical that is on the dock was in the electrical schematics for the boat lifts and, and everything. And so that was all done, signed off on. After it was signed off on, I think, two weeks later, we, so we had to do a lot of surveys, multiple surveys. If we'd known upfront that we needed all these different surveys that were on, I probably could have saved myself five thousand dollars, because every time I called my surveyor, it was a thousand dollars. I had to add, add the two pilings out at the end of the dock to the survey, so I had to call him back for that. So we went through, hired the architect, the engineer, got all that paperwork done. We submitted those drawings. Then they came back, well, we needed another survey for a water, uh, like a elevation survey for water runoff. So we got that survey. Then when we submitted that survey, it was, oh, well, you don't need that survey. What you need is a drainage survey that has to be signed off by a drainage engineer. So now we had to hire a different company. So I wasted my money on the elevation survey. Had to hire a different company for the water drainage, and the water drainage was just for the shed. So the shed is a twelve-by-twelve shed. And so we got that done, and then we resubmitted those drawings. Then it came back, well, we need the elevation of the shed on your cervix, because that wasn't on there. So we went back to our surveyor, got the elevations. Then they came back, after we submitted that one again, came back and said, well, no, that's not gonna work. Now you'll need a floodgate put in your shed. So I got this floodgate that lets water into the walls of the shed, because it's not really sealed for a wood structure, authorities aren't for, I see that block home. We got that. We, we, we had to go back to our architect and our engineer just to draw in that floodgate onto our drawings. So we finally got that, submitted it. Uh, we now have our permits for everything.
Well, I think we also feel like, um, when we first found the, the notices in our backyard, a lot of people on the island had been given prior notice back in October, November, whereas ours had been sent. So we, we only had a few days, like three or four days before the, the town meeting. And we asked for an extension, but really it wasn't an extension, because this was our first knowledge about that we had things that weren't approved.
Yeah, so our neighbors had ninety days before they had to appear before the magistrate, and then they asked for an extension and got it.
In February.
We never had those ninety days. We started out with ninety days, and we couldn't get contractors fast enough to do the work fast enough.
We'd been working on it, and we wanted to get it right.
Yeah, and we, we, we requested an extension before our extension was up, because we knew there was no way we could get all these documents done. And that's when the town said, well, the magistrate won't be back in until July. So there's that time from the end of our ninety days to getting in front of the magistrate again that we're being fined for. And then after we got our sixty-day extension, even though we asked for ninety days, I asked for a hundred eighty originally, and I got ninety. Then I asked at the sixty-day, when I asked for ninety days, and I was given sixty. So, you know, we kind of feel that the fines, we were never told how much fines were per day, and, you know, that you would receive these until you actually have these, but... So we feel, you know, we've done our due diligence in working on getting these permits and getting this taken care of, and feel that we find is unjust.
Is your, your project not complete yet because you just got the permits?
So we...
We haven't had them come out to inspect yet.
Yeah, so we just got the permits two weeks ago? I got the...
In October. Well, we did actually get a new note, a new email telling us about...
So before the sixty days was up, we did get approval for all of our permits except for the shed. There was all the other drainage plans and stuff that we had to do additionally for the shed that we weren't aware of. So we did all of that, and then we got the final permit for the shed on, uh...
We had to get an engineer for the, uh, vent, right?
Yeah, we had to, we had to hire the engineer and the architect to draw in the vent on the shed.
Which were at their mercy. I mean, you know, they were great, but it took time. You know, we just, we want to know, we want to do everything right. We just don't feel we've had the right amount of time.
Do you, you were telling me you'd get mail at, at post office. I mean, we should have sent them mail, correct? They, you're notified by mail, so the first, I know you, I can't believe it, the first thing you saw was in your yard.
It was, it was, because it went to our...
The notification went to a house that we hadn't owned for three years.
And so they didn't have any more...
On the, on the west coast of Florida.
So we're gonna come back to...
And of course, when we were here for the magistrate, the, the town lawyer says, well, you know, that's your fault for not, you know, telling the, uh, Brevard County Property Appraisers of your address.
But we had three locks.
And we actually, we went back to the Brevard County Property Appraisers, and then, uh, September fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one, we gave them a change of address. So since that date, we have not had a P O box since two thousand twenty-one. We have a house, another house here in Brevard that is where all our tax bills and everything go to. And they never...
Keep those.
Yeah, we receive our tax bills every year, so...
So do we have that address?
No, we sent this to the one that the property appraiser had on file at the time, which was before turn that one. And if we don't have the other way to get a hold of them, that's the only way that we can send them to.
We changed three of them, because there's three locks, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty. And they only changed, I think, two of them for it.
Apparently, they never took the old address out of the...
In fact, I still, the thing I got, um, notifying us of the fees we would have to pay at the top to have our old address on the, on the west coast too. I don't know why that was the case.
Just gonna ask you. Oh, do, were you, were you all in the workshops? Were you notified of the workshops we had in twenty twenty-three? That we did all the changing of the ordinances?
Orders. Um, no.
We didn't attend that?
We didn't. I, I, like I said, we never really have... I mean, I'm kind of, this is new, and I like that you, you know...
Yeah, I, I travel a lot for work, so I probably wouldn't even attend.
And I wouldn't have gone on my own. So, but he's out of town a lot, so, um, but...
And so, so when, uh, you bought the property, and then you, you built, you added the dock, you added the torches, and then I guess there's a tiki thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did all that?
So, so the tiki that, that we got dingo originally was the, the, the town said, well, if it was built on the Seminole Indians, you don't need a building permit. We said, okay, great. So we got the notarized letter from the Seminole Indians, uh, got it submitted to the town, so we didn't need a permit. And it went until when we came in for the, um, the, the, the extension in July, where we then informed, oh, you don't need a building permit for your tiki. You need a zoning permit, which we never were told of that before. So then we had to get the zoning permit for the tiki.
I know the staff has a process where they, you know, tell you all that stuff.
Right.
So I don't know how it got lost in translation, but they do everyone the same.
Um, well, we were actually told we had a, a second shed. It was a, it's a plastic shed. We were told, um, by two people here that we did not need a permit.
Yeah, I brought them...
Then they decided that we did, and it was later on that they decided. And I was told by them, well, so-and-so is, has to have one on your island, so so do you. Which originally, we'd been told.
Yeah, so, so we had like a, it's a Home Depot, like a Rubbermaid put-together shed, ten by seven, less than a hundred square feet. We were, I brought the paperwork in when I brought in the paperwork for the dock and submitted it. They came back within a few minutes and said, no, you don't need a permit for this shed. Well, when we came in to do our final permitting for our shed, they're like, well, where's the stamp for this shed? It's like, well, we don't have it, because we were told we didn't need a permit. Well, now you do. So then we had to go back to the, um, uh, what is it, uh, the Health Department?
U H S?
And get a stamp for that shed and pay for an additional permit for that shed. So that was kind of like at the end of that sixty days or after that sixty days, that we found out about that one.
What to do?
I know it, it, it's, it's hard, and like I said, we really, we want to do what's right, but we paid quite a bit in surveys, and now we have to do... I just received another email, um, in October, uh, for my, for Lot Thirty-Eight.
Yeah, they said we're coming back to the island for round two.
Right, and, and I kind of would have thought a survey for all three lots if I'd have known. I understand they're going, you know, but they're dealing with what we own. I would have thought they'd try to do it all at the same time and not kind of...
Yeah, because this could have cost me another twelve hundred dollars for another survey.
For the other lot.
Um, because I have a fence, a little picket fence is how you keep the dogs in. So a permit for that I'll have to pull yet, which is not going... I've not been, got the official notification, other than just that we know. And they also said, uh, we'd have to pull a permit for the dock that's on that property, but we don't have the dock on that property.
But we have a lift, but if you come on that...
Notification.
So we've already been approved for that lift.
I'm not gonna do that back now.
Then we sent them an email, and they said, no, we haven't.
Yeah, so now they want, now they want a second one.
Two more screen.
It's complicated.
So...
It's her full-time job.
Well, I'm not very good at it.
So you have, I don't know, four, something like four permits that you've been granting?
Seven.
Seven permits? And what, what's your plan on, you're working to finish, to finish those permits? You have to do things for this.
Those are, they're done.
Yeah, they're done. We're gonna call for an inspection as soon as we can.
Right.
As soon as, because we're, we'll be out of the country next week for a couple of weeks, and then we're gonna call for inspections after that.
We're done with that, and, and then Lot Thirty-Eight is a whole other next, um, we're gonna have to get a term.
That's the next round of, uh, food box.
For the other part. But yes, for the things that we have been fined for, the, the, for that, um, are all completed. And we did have them, everything completed except for the shed on September fifteenth, I think sixteenth was our deadline. Um, we had all those completed, but the shed. And then we were waiting on that flood elevation thing.
It was a drainage plan by, by a drainage engineer.
We thought, oh, we got that done. I think she maybe got that any time, but then we got...
We were told we needed a, an elevation survey for the water runoff. So we did that and paid for that. And then when we submitted it, it was, no, you need a, a groundwater drainage plan by a, a, an engineer, signed off. So that's a whole nother company we had to hire. That was additional, and they're like, well, you didn't really have to pay for this other survey, because we have to do that survey anyway. So, you know, that was a, I think, a twelve-hundred-dollar cost that we didn't have to incur, but, uh, we did. If I thought about this nine months ago, I would have jacked the shed up, put pontoons in there, and called the houseboat. I messed up.
All right, um, it's hard to keep track of everything.
I know, I know.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know.
I mean, you've been notified, notified, called, and, and you're still in violation? You haven't complied with it, the whole thing, yes?
No, we have, haven't we?
You just told me you haven't got the shed approved yet.
No, it's not. It's been approved.
Oh, no, it's approved. No, yeah, it's, everything's been approved.
Yeah, the, the shed was approved, uh...
In fact, I was, I was told that the permit for the shed was approved.
Ten-nine.
Was it ten-nine?
Yeah.
And I actually got an email saying, hey, you haven't paid for your shed. Well, it was four hundred and some dollars, and, you know, I gotta work it out by the... And I paid it on the twentieth, and that was the day that we got the, um, bill, the forty-three hundred. But everything is done and permitted.
Yeah.
We just haven't had an inspection yet. Well, I was told we have...
Okay, so that, that's correct. Staff, that's correct. Everything is...
Right, they got permission, but there's no inspection.
You still haven't passed your inspections.
Correct.
So we don't know if it's either, what you have done is correct, because you haven't even gotten an inspection yet. So you've been in violation for sixty days, and then sixty days extension. And, you know, it's not our fault that you didn't give the people the right mailing address.
I did, but...
Well, the county got the correct address, that the town...
They don't have a correct address. We don't have a correct mail.
I have given it to them.
Yeah. Now we, we have a new address, a correct address for them now? We have a correct?
I, I just wonder why the email that was sent saying we owe the forty-three hundred still has the old address from the west coast.
That's probably because it was on your recorded order, and that's when it got mailed out to you. Is back in July is what we had.
The recorded order? No, I mean, the, the, in July, you had our, our grant address.
Yeah, but that document was already reported. That's probably what she ended up sending, sending you was one that we had from prior before. But I did check the property appraiser. It does have an updated address on it. As of today, yes.
Yep, we, we know we've had all kinds of violations on the island. We've had a special... Yep, we, we, we know we've had all kinds of violations on the island. We've had a special meeting with all the folks from the island. We made arrangements with everybody at that meeting to get everything done.
I know. I wasn't there.
You sure have been there. Everybody on the island was notified. Everybody was, you were, you were.
Oh, no, not everybody, unfortunately.
Everybody on that island talks to everybody else. Don't tell me anything.
No, 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 no.
They come in and they all, they all know each other. They all know what is out of this and what's.
Okay, they do. I am not a type of person that really gets all involved with everybody. I, I, I've never had this before on.
We, we were notified in February.
I never realized I needed to go to council meetings.
No, you don't. You, you should be notified by mail like everybody else is. And, you know, we didn't have your right address. We finally got it, but.
You, you don't need.
You don't have to come here to find out the, the workshops we had was because a lot of folks on the island.
Help, you let, help, helps them out, that's.
Well, right, because they had built things, um, that weren't up to compliance and they wanted to change some things, and we worked with them. I don't know how long. It was, it was a very long time.
We, we weren't involved. I, I know, I understand everybody on the island.
Yeah, we were, we were under the impression our two decks and our, and our dock had a permit pulled.
We didn't.
We didn't realize it.
Did you guys, you guys build it?
We hired a contractor.
And he told you he pulled the permit?
Yes.
Well, they always bring you this paper.
Yeah, well, I did, I did end up getting the paperwork, but it was a permit that was pulled with E P A, not through the.
Not for the, not for your porches?
Right, so with that, he, um.
My problem is you still are not in compliance. You don't have inspections. You haven't even been inspected. We don't know, we don't know at this point whether or not everything that you did is going to pass inspection.
Okay.
So you're asking us.
How are the people going to come across?
And you're away with stuff that is not even finished yet. You're not finished yet. You, it turns out you.
Okay, how are they going to come across to give us an inspection?
They come across all the time. I can give them my book to go.
Well, I won't give them my book because that's a liability.
I can take the turn of a cross in my book. There's always a way.
I was told I needed to provide.
So we will, we will call for inspections tomorrow for the week after next and get them done.
And call, you have to call and make an appointment for your inspections.
Right. Yeah, we will.
Enough set the time for an inspection. You can't set the time.
But are we required to bring them across?
No.
No, no, no.
I was told in an email that I was.
We're telling you, no, you're not required to bring them across.
All right.
But we, we will have our inspections done before probably the end of this month.
What, what would you feel about, once you get your inspections done, then we'll reconsider.
I bet we should move to the back.
Get your, get your, um, permits complete. I think those things they have to do for the permits.
Right.
Right?
Well, this, this fine was also contingent upon getting those permits signed off on.
About inspection.
And they're not signed off on yet.
They don't.
They're going to miss Christmas.
Well, I don't know. I'm kind of under the.
They don't. They live on an island?
I'm not going to get a fine until I pay this fine.
I can't forget where they're living. It's an island, they're putting in a boat dock.
Big dogs. They don't really have a boat.
Yes, we will be there.
I think you should.
Ross on the barbecue.
Yeah. They live there?
I'm not worried about the inspector. The inspector, when he was out doing the dock, uh, he looked at the porches and said, yeah, that looks, you know, because I don't see the issues with it. It's just a matter of getting the permit.
When you get all your files and records and everything, then you should have come to us and said, I've got all my inspections and everything's done and I've passed the inspections. I don't know if you want to pass. So if you don't pass the inspections, you got to start getting things fixed so you have inspection. So you can't, if somebody is asking for us to do away with something that you haven't even completed.
Well, we don't want to leave hanging here while we waited for them. We're getting bigger.
No, you're not being fined anymore, correct?
That's correct.
Right, because fines have stopped.
But I, I do, I do want to make note that anything that we unable to inspect will have to be signed off by a Florida-registered architect or engineer for construction of it. So.
You understand that?
So, so this is, this is news to me. Uh, so what, can you say that repeatedly? If we cannot inspect it, then the architect or engineer has to sign off on it.
Is that like the inside walls of the shed and?
Right, can you, it's like looking at this wall, can you tell me if it's strapped at the top? You can't because it's covered up. So unless you have it open so we can inspect it, it has to be certified by an architect or engineer. And they'll give you the requirements that they have to approve. We'll, we'll call for the inspections, and if the inspector says, yeah, I can't do that, then.
Yeah.
We'll proceed with a, uh, houseboat.
You're coming to us ahead. You've got it.
Okay, yeah.
You got a part. You're getting there. Okay.
Just getting the permits of the whole timeframe. I mean, just to get the permit for the dock after we submitted was, were we not?
Yeah, and that, and that is, I guess that, that's the lesson to learn, and I think you all did all this work. The, the lesson is pull the permit before you do the work.
Right, right. I, I, I just didn't, I, I, to be honest, I did not realize moving a shed like ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. I just didn't.
Yeah.
If someone's here on the island, it works better. They know who to call, um, in front of that island.
But no, if they don't want to talk to the people on the island, that's fine. They call here and they'll find out. They call right here and then ma'am, you'll tell me what to do, what you need to do. Okay, so, you know, I understand your frustration. It's frustrating for us to, I mean, I can't.
Oh, I know.
It's so much, it's, it's very frustrating. So, um, I, my suggestion, um, you know, go ahead and get your permits done, get inspected, and then come talk to us again.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Do you want to sit down to hold on to the V?
You don't have to stand.
You've been through it. Okay, that takes care of it.
Give me two sleeping pills.
Okay, Jason?
They did.
Okay, the Christmas tree lighting event when he held something on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from Florida Southern to Grand Malcary Community Park. The ethics training, your annual ethics training will begin on December day first, twenty twenty-five. The, our next council meeting will be Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. We'll have our Christmas potluck after the meeting has adjourned. Please bring your covered fish to share. And in the lobby, you'll see that we have the angel tree set up, and we are participating in the Salvation Army Angel Tree Program again this year. Eight angels are now available in the lobby, and all unwrapped gifts are due back by Thursday, December fourth. And the town of Grand Malcary is one of the largest contributors to this program.
Yeah, we have generous, generous residents.
I should say the residents of town.
Yeah. Very generous residents. It's, it's amazing how fast those things go and, and come in here. There's a pool of toys.
I said old people.
Old people.
So.
All right, um, okay, um, what's next? We have, well.
Was there, oh, all right, yeah, that doesn't sound very confident. Was there, uh, co, uh, were we allowed, the public allowed to speak after the last, uh, little witch trial you did? Uh, but against the, the workshops and against?
It wasn't a, it wasn't a public hearing, was it?
It wasn't a public thing. Because I'm opposed to those early morning workshops on a Wednesday morning with the pancakes.
Oh, okay, all right, I know, yeah, no, that, okay, I know what you're talking about.
I don't get up that time.
Okay, all right, um, all right, let's go to.
I don't care what kind of pancake.
All right, then we'll address it. Let's see, town administrators report, we did that. Now council reports and comments. Start down this one. Dan?
Yeah, just like everyone to know that, uh, the tree, the tree is up that, I'd like to just give Rick Hood some credit for that, that every year he does all the electrical. So every day, every time you see, several of us in town have worked on it and do stuff, but Rick is the one that makes the tree light up every year and keeps it going. So, I want people to be aware of that. It's a big project this year. We did it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Way too thin town home lights up.
Yeah. And, uh, no, nothing else.
Well, I thank the volunteers that came out to help with the Christmas tree. It's definitely not a one-person project. It's heavy, and it requires a lot of effort. Hopefully, you had volunteers come out and appreciate their help.
Are you talking about the running the water I saw coming in?
Yeah.
How'd you put it in the water? With electrical.
The Christmas magic.
They've been working on it.
There's electricity going out to it.
I know. I'm afraid to go swimming out there. It might bite me. Nah, I'm sure.
Is, uh, I'd like to ask staff, for the Christmas potluck, when we first started that, it was really a way to thank the volunteers. And over the years, it's been fewer and fewer and fewer that come. Uh, maybe we could send a special notice to, uh, Trails and P and Z, you know, any of the other volunteers that help out with the town and that. Make sure they're aware of it. That's all.
Yeah, um, Jason, I don't know, uh, they've had the, uh, Jordans Landing Dock closed for a month now. And I'm not sure if there's, they're going to do repairs or if it's just all the dirt or the sand that's washed up. But I was wondering if you could get in touch with the, uh, our district three county commissioner and see if she can't light a fire under somebody in parks and rec or whatever. Because that would help alleviate a small percentage of the cars and trucks and boat trailers on U S one, as you well know.
Yeah.
But, uh, and thank you, uh, I had, uh, contacted Jason about the, uh, resurfacing needed on Los Palmas and on Shelby. They were in piddle shape. Uh, Los Palmas, I think they'd rather scrape it. They should have just sprayed with Roundup. But, uh, but anyway, um, it turned out real nice. Uh, makes the entrance door town look good from the sound, and, um, and that's all we got.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah. The only thing I was going to tell them was the thing, so I'm trying to figure out bicycle for Jordans Landing.
So that means no one can use them. They wouldn't launch from there.
No, and I just, it just creates more fat, fat up of the boats and trailers on the island. Because they're, they're, they, hey, well, no, Jason would be happy with that, which is.
In that port a lot.
Okay, he'll look into it. Okay, um, I just wanted to comment on, on, we need to schedule a, um, workshop, residence workshop, whatever you call it. It was a breakfast and now it's not, but, um, I don't, council, what would be good, good for you, evenings or Saturdays? I think staff, not last Saturday.
Well, yeah, this time of year it's not using, or Saturday.
Yeah.
I would like to. Always, always.
Yeah, um, we could wait until January and do it in the evening, just like, on the, just like a workshop. So, um, you guys?
Does that, does that work with Ron? I mean, last one, he said he could make the last one.
I know.
So that's how we make sure.
Yeah, we set it up according to your schedule, and you didn't show up.
Well, eight-thirty in the morning on Wednesday, I mean.
But you said it was, oh, whatever.
Well, we all, we talked about ten o'clock on Saturdays, but I understand.
No, but I think Jessica called you and you said it was okay, but it's all right, it's all right.
No, no, I did, I said it wasn't.
Okay, all right, no problem, so.
But, but it's not even so much me, it's, it's.
Well, there's a lot of people, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we can try for a workshop in January after the holidays, so it calms down a little bit. So then we can work on a date, or you want to work on one now or?
We can work on one now.
Okay. When's our meeting month, um, in January?
Fourteenth.
Thirteenth of January?
Yeah, it's the fourteenth.
Yeah, fourteen.
January fourteenth, that's seven, or it's six, I'm sorry.
So, um, would you prefer the seventh or the twenty-first?
I like the first.
Yeah.
They still be caught in airport.
And it don't have to be on Wednesday.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't, that's true.
Day and day of week, I mean, it won't, no.
Would you guys prefer a Wednesday or?
Or a weekday night?
Yeah.
Wednesday's good.
Everybody's used to Wednesday, so. Wednesday, the twenty-first, January. It would be, um, what do we call it, a residence workshop? And, and the format will be a workshop.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, you, you have Western will call it.
Could you make, could you make it like seven so people that work get here a little later?
It's up to you all.
I mean, you, you're, you all have to be here, but.
Yeah.
Later, you know, but part of it, it, the whole key to this is, as you see by my appearances here, information to the public. That's my whole thing here.
And we've, we've, we've had big crowds here at six o'clock.
The cameras, the meetings like this, it's all to let them.
Understand.
A lot of people don't know what's going on, and they're, and, and they're surprised, and then you hear a lot of stuff from people. And I want to find out if it's really going on or not, you know, it's, so the more people that can attend this. And at six o'clock, I mean, I'm always late because I have duties I have to do. My girlfriend can't make it on Wednesdays because she has stuff. So seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock is perfect if that's over.
Seven o'clock, and Wednesdays, no Wednesdays are good.
Is Wednesday okay or?
Well, if you have it on Thursday, you don't, you don't have to worry about the people calling on Friday, like complaining about what happened on Thursday, because you'll all be gone.
It's Thursday night football.
Well, whatever, you know.
Okay, so we'll schedule it for January twenty-first at seven P M, twenty twenty-six?
All right.
And, yeah, and if you're, if you find a better time, it, it, what matters more than the day or is if everybody can do it.
Right, yeah, yeah. All right, so, and again, it'll be a workshop format, um, no votes, nothing like that, but just a question and answer, what, what you wanted, right? So, um, if you want, if, you know, if you think your question is going to require a little bit of research.
Right.
You might email it to the staff so that we have some ti, you know, like a week ahead of time, so we have some time to look it up. If not, and if we can't answer your question at that workshop, give us time to do that, okay? All right, all right, um, let's see, any? Council, I mean, the, the residents of Assau, we need, do we need to consider, you know, do you want to consider video recording?
I don't think so. I don't think we should consider. I don't see residents that just walk out like this.
No.
We just want to watch it. At least look into what it costs.
Yeah, that would be fine. Yeah, but we see what it costs, and I, I'm sure we probably have done it before, haven't we?
No, we, we better not do it.
The last time this was brought up, we had a, a push, or a push against it from the residents stating that they were, didn't feel comfortable getting up and speaking in front of camera. So that was a pushback we've had in the past.
I see.
Okay, well, I record everything on my phone.
Just a minute, okay.
So the people who think they're anonymous are not anonymous anymore. Especially the flag in court and the person setting about the MAGA flags with the code enforcement up and down Berry Road and on that other house. She's not secret either.
Ron, you're not representing us.
I'm not Ron. He's Ron. Well, we have Santa Claus going on here.
Ned, sorry. All right.
There, there'll always be some pushback, but in, in general, it'll document what was talked, talked about, who said what.
We'll consider, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll have.
I think that's an excellent idea.
We'll have, we'll cost it out and then we'll consider it, uh, when you can try it and if it doesn't work out. Yeah, that's not good either.
There are people that can't come here because of whatever reason.
So, so let me, if, if you don't want to do, would there be a problem with me coming in with help and setting up three cameras in here and doing it privately?
We can't stop that, no.
Right, I mean, uh.
Well, you have to have a way to communicate it.
Okay, well, normally, let's not have a conversation like this.
I, I think it's a good idea too.
Okay, but thank you.
For now. But I do think it's a good idea to have it.
All right, thank you. That's your input. And we'll, we'll consider it. I don't know, Jason, should we agenda it, or are you guys going to do some costing first?
You're over to the council.
Okay, all right, um, and just so, um, Ned, to set the record straight. We have a sign ordinance, and we allow one, what, how's that, how big is it? Four square feet in your yard. You can have anything you want on it, but that's it. You know, you can have a four-square-foot sign.
Four square feet?
But, Your Honor, uh, Mrs. Mayor, the sign ordinance applies to somebody who is running for office. That's what it, the political sign ordinance is along the roadways. They are attached to those little metal things. You know, like you see the landscaping companies have. So that applies, so those have to be cleared out five days after the election, as Mr. Robino pointed out at the meeting, which I recorded on my camera. I've watched a bunch of times. I watch all these meetings over and over and over again. I got to memorize. I know every last thing you've ever said.
The ordinance, the ordinance allows you one, four foot square.
No, we're talking about flags that people are flying on their property. No, we're talking about flags that people are flying on their property or on their barn or wherever that say, I support President Trump, I love MAGA.
They have a four foot flag.
Yep.
A flag is not, it's three foot, I think by five.
They have a sign.
All right.
That's the sign ordinance. We have.
Well, let's open a business and get the right size of those flags out there.
That's it.
Well.
One sign for your property.
Well, bullying the neighbor, specifically the one after the stop sign near your house, who has a big barn and his house is on stilts. He used to have this big Trump banner flying and every time I went by, I would salute it and I felt so good about living in this town. It made me feel great about myself. Then there was another person on the end of Berry, uh, Braybrook and Berry, and he had Trump stuff all over and, and supporting. That's wonderful. Now, what we have is a woman who is on Berry down the way and she's got a, a flag that says, I hate the king or whatever it is, or no kings. And then there's another one about Ukraine, this and Ukraine, which is fine. I, I, that's her way of expressing Black Lives Matter, the, the pride, the one with the, the L G Bs and whatevers. That's wonderful. They should be able to express that because that's legal. We're talking about the law. We're not talking about anything other than the law. And those political signs, Ned Badjalopo for mayor. You can fit that on a sign. It's gonna be all over this place. We're gonna bury a million of them. But after the election, I gotta take them down, once I lose.
Okay, all right, the, I'm just saying that our, our ordinance allows that size sign and I think an American flag and a service flag, whatever the state allows according to flags.
So was the code inf- I'm sorry, interrupt.
All right, so.
I apologize.
Yeah, so if that was, um, if there was anything other than that, and if there's someone, um, with, with signs and flags right now that, that don't meet that code, then we, you know, we need to tell them to take them down.
But somebody has to, somebody has to come in and tell us that they're there and they're complaining about it.
Right.
We don't take them down when somebody comes in and files a complaint.
But if it, okay.
We only, we only, we only respond when somebody comes in and files a complaint. We do not operate that. We don't go out and look for violations. We wait, if a neighbor comes in and says, that person's in violation, we have to, we have to respond to that. That's how they get taken down. When somebody, one of your neighbors comes in and says, he's got that on his property and I don't like it, we have to go out and respond to that. We do not do it at all. We don't go out and look for it. We wait till some, somebody comes and complains, we have to file. And now, if somebody files a complaint, it's the law, they have to tell you who is complaining. It used to be, they didn't ask you, but now the state law says they have. If somebody comes and files a complaint against you, we have to let you know who it is and we have to come here after you and tell you whatever their complaint was. We're coming to look at it and if it's a violation, you have to take it down. That's how it works, Ned. We don't go looking for it.
I hear you.
Somebody to complain. So if you have to activate your neighbor and they come to file a complaint against you, we come and look at it. Other than that, we don't follow.
I, I, I hear you. I was just, I was thinking, uh, at the meeting, which I did record on my gumball machine telephone here, that's probably worth fifty bucks. And what happened was, we were talking about flags in people's yards or specifically the ones at Braybrook and Berry, which were pro-MAGA, pro-Trump. Now we've got flags that are no kings, whatever that means.
You want to file a complaint against them?
I don't want to do nothing.
Okay, that's, we got, we got the information.
I don't, I, that's their American right. I believe the law will reflect that it is legal to fly flags on the property. I looked it up on the computer before I left the house. You can fly your flag on your property, as long as it's in a private property, whatever it may be, except for maybe the Hitler flag, no one's that. But I mean, other than that, you probably can't do anything, you know, you can fly whatever flag you want to.
All right, thank you.
Okay, wonderful.
Just so, uh, I, when this came up a while back, after that, I contacted town hall because it was said that there are rules and there are laws. And they steered me towards our charter, what is it, our, our, our book?
Town code.
Or, yeah, town code. And there was two pages on flags and signage, two pages, and I read it eighteen times. Just because there's, mm, does, the word political doesn't appear on either of those pages.
You can't regulate content.
Right, and, and you're allowed three flags on your property. It doesn't say what flags you fly. The American flag has to be higher than the other two flags. They have to be fifteen feet back from your property line. That is the rules with flags. You can put whatever flag you want up. If the American flag is flying of one of those three, it has to be the highest one. The poles have to be fifteen feet from your property line. So it doesn't say political, and I agree with anything that's on easement, public right away should be removed, whether it's political signs or Andy screens or someone's roofing. You know, that, that stuff is nice to keep open. But the flag thing, and I remember you guys were talking about passing an ORN incident, it got dropped. It got dropped because if you read our two pages that we have already in our rules, there's nothing that could be done about that. As long as they're following the three flags, American flag highest, fifteen feet back and the score.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we'll look into it. All right. That's it. That's it for our business. Anything? I was a mayor?
Hi.
Hi.
That makes me feel.
Thank you all for coming.